Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Bonner Spring City Council meeting. We will start out this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, which is going to be given by Star Thomas Wise. So if you'll please stand with me, if possible.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite us just to take a brief moment and connect with the divine light within. I call on the directions of north, east, south, and west, and the corresponding elements of earth, air, fire, and water, giving deep gratitude for the sacredness of the planet that is our home, that sustains us, holds us. May the energies that surround us be present and also connect us. May we feel the oneness of intention and purpose, being guided by the highest wisdom. As we are grounded in truth, we rise together in trust. May blessings reign as benediction upon the city council. Amen, salaam, and so might it be.
Thank you, Star. With that, we'll move on to the next, which is the citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. It's an opportunity for citizens to speak to the city council. I'm seeing nobody in the audience, but we'll go ahead and open the floor if anybody wishes to come up and speak. If not, we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda, which concludes the minutes of the July 8th, 2024 city council meeting, claims for city operations, public use requests for Thiblo Days, and a resolution of support for the renaming of Wyandotte County Park. Does staff wish to pull anything? Citizens wish to pull anything? Council? Anything? If not, would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. McMahon. Vote, please.
Kip?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
I'm going to abstain from voting because my name is on the public use request for Thiblo Days.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to new business. Item number one, we have a bid award for the Second Street Water Line. Staff?
Good evening, Frank A. Bart, Public Works Director. This is a bid award for the Second Street Water Line replacement. Currently, we have a four-inch, I don't really know how old it is, water line that connects from pretty much Oak Street all the way out to the other side of town, to Shite Lane. This would be a contract that would replace all of that with a 12-inch line. And as I noted earlier, this is what I'm going to call a financial efficiency. Because we expect it to be 100% funded through an ARPA grant through Wyandotte County. So this is the type of efficiency we all like, of course. There were seven bidders, and the recommendation for the low bid is nine hundred eighty-nine, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand and five dollars. I entertain any questions, I guess, at this point?
Is there anybody from the audience that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to award the Second Street Water Line Improvement Project to Conley's Site Work and Utilities Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand five dollars contingent upon funding through Wyandotte County ARPA funding.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Ms. Blanks. We'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Kip. Do you have any questions, comments?
Nothing, thanks. I hope you get that efficiency and that.
Exactly.
Nothing.
No questions. Thanks, Frank.
No questions. Thank you.
Just one, just for clarification. I was reading earlier today, it said something about putting in new water meters in that amount of money. Don't we already have new water meters? And how does that play into that statement that they were going to put in new water meters?
As we're going through and making the improvements, we're planning to go ahead and replace the water meters along there that have not already been replaced, so that that whole section of this project will be completed when it's done.
So it's not them buying more water meters?
No.
Okay.
In fact, we would be providing the water meters that.
That's great.
Yeah.
And I might ask a quick question. As you know, it's been a lot of fun over the last six months, a year of people have been rather disappointed in the water quality, which we're about to get that, some of that resolved. But I think some of it also is our, some of our old aging infrastructure. Will replacing this water line not only give us the service we need down in that area and for looping, but will also getting rid of that old water line that was there, will that potentially help with some of the?
Absolutely.
Issues that we have?
Absolutely.
That's good to hear.
It's a very long piece. It's a connection that we don't have right now. So this will complete that between this new 12-inch over here and this new 12-inch over here. It's going to make that connection.
Any other questions, or anyone? Seeing none, I would call for a vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, on to item number two. Agreement with the Unified Government of KCK, Wyandotte County, for American Rescue Plan funds.
This plays into the previous item, of course. This is actually the agreement with Unified Government to actually agree to accept the 1.3 million dollars in ARPA grant funding. Not much to discuss beyond that, other than it's got to be committed by the end of this year, I believe, and spent by the end of next year. And I don't anticipate having any trouble at all in making that happen. So with that, I'll take questions.
By far, the citizens wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Unified Government of Wyandotte County for access to 1.3 million dollars in ARPA grant funding.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Girly, a second by Ms. Long. And we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions?
I don't have anything here.
No questions.
Where do you foresee this money going?
Well, about a million of it is going to go to the Second Street Water Line, for sure. And at the moment, we're having some discussions with Wyandotte County and the ARPA folks about the eligibility of some sidewalks. We have the Second Avenue specifically, that sidewalk project there, that if it's eligible, we can use some of that. If not, we have all intentions of continuing to replace bad water lines.
Okay.
To use it up.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. McMahon? Thanks for all you did, Frank.
Yep.
The UG has those funds currently?
It's my understanding they do, yes.
So they should be able to release them to us?
Yes.
Too sweet.
And, yeah.
Too sweet.
Too sweet.
And will they also be sending the interest they've been earning on that money while we sat in their?
I seriously doubt that, but let's not be greedy.
I'm just curious. So we do have at least, we do have at least a few projects identified that we'd like to try to utilize some of that additional funding that is going to be there once we finish with the street, you know, the water line.
Yes. And the water line can be extended. That's eligible, replacing old water lines, water infrastructure.
Because we do have to have those projects identified by the end of this year. And then they have to be completely constructed by?
And next.
By the end of next year, right? But we do have at least some.
Yeah, just keep in mind that the ARPA is restricted to certain things. So what Wyandotte County, the UG wanted to have was this agreement in place as a sub-recipient, and that's what it entails. It's a little bit different than how we dealt with the CARES Act, where they just gave us the money and then we were able to spend it freely. So this is a little bit more cumbersome to go through. But the intent is, at the very least, to get this project, the Second Street Water Line project, funded at a million dollars. Obviously, that leaves us with that $300,000 mark, which the initial thought was, as Frank mentioned, that we can extend this project, the water line project. We know that it fits the requirements for ARPA spending, so that, you know, that shouldn't be too onerous of a task to just, you know, expand the project within this agreement. If the sidewalks, which is a sci-fi funded program, county infrastructure program, along the same corridor can get funded, that would free up that sci-fi money to get used somewhere else in the community, was somewhat of the logic. But again, if that becomes too cumbersome to deal with, there is a need to continue the water improvements along that area. So again, you may see this agreement again if it is expanded to include sidewalks, just because, again, it's being modified at that point. But this has been a 12-month-plus conversation to get us to this point. But we do need to have this all obligated and started by the end of this year, any way you go, and then constructed within a timeframe.
I do appreciate all staff's hard work in making this occur, you know, at 1.3 million. I just would hate to leave 300,000 on the table if we've got some other stuff we can use it for, so. If there's no other comments or questions, do we have one more down?
Is that water line under Second Street that is going to tear up the street?
Yes.
Cause street closures for a time?
Yes, certainly some disruptions.
What's the thought on the timeline for that project?
We've actually talked with Megan. I don't know if you're referring to the Thiblo Days stuff?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
Generally speaking.
We're going to make sure that it doesn't actually get started until, like, the Monday after that, so that would minimize, I think they have some kind of a transport. Maybe even the fun run is on that street, so.
And it will take a couple of months?
Oh, easy, yeah. It's going to take six, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yes, it will tear up the street. There will be some inconvenience.
I would say along that.
In the long run.
No, you're fine. Along that same line, then, which maybe start thinking, is there going to be coordination with the school system, because that potentially could affect?
Absolutely.
People moving out of the school, you know, from pickup days and drop-offs? Yes. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I would call for a vote.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Girly?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, next item. We need an executive session for non-elected personnel matters. Do we have a time that we need to probably? Say 15 minutes, probably. We can probably cover everything we need to. So let's say we, when you make the motion, whoever makes it reads it as is and put in there 8:20.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters pursuant to exception ASA 75-43119B1. The open meeting will resume in the council chamber at 8:20 PM.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Blanks, a second by Ms. Girly. We'll just do a quick voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, I would say we're adjourned for 15 minutes. Okay, I would accept a motion to come to resume the open meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move to resume the open meeting at 8:25 with no action taken.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Girly, a second by Ms. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on to the third part of this session, of this item. I would accept a motion to approve the employment agreement for an interim city manager with Amber Vogon to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, so. We'd like to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the employment agreement for an interim city manager and authorize the mayor to execute that agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kip and a second by Mr. Blanks. Anybody wish to add anything? Seeing none, I would call for a vote.
Girly?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then moving on with, one more additional item on here, with the consensus of the council, I would then ask the staff to go ahead and start the presentation and request for an RFQ from search agencies to start the process to, start the process to find and hire a new city manager. Everyone on board with that? Okay. And with that, then, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
The only thing I want to add beyond the written report, the city just completed the mural project solicitation, so that was a solicitation to put a couple murals up in the downtown area. I was able to look at those today with Megan, and I know she presented those to a committee that will be reviewing it. And in talking with her, it's just, it's amazing to see the amount of effort that was put into those, but also the complexity of, and the diversity of folks that put in for that. So you had people that were, you know, across the country, region, and also locally, that put in for this. And I think it's just, it's a strong testament to the value that you all have put into creating a sense of place downtown and really trying to make it something that is uniquely Bonner. And that's just, again, I think you'll see those things come to fruition here by the end of the year, hopefully. They better be, because we got to spend the money, right? The grant funds behind it. But this is, again, something that we started several years ago to try to put in art and create these sense, the sense of place in our community, and it's come into fruition. There's some great, great murals in there. I'll just put it that way. And then lastly, just, this is my last council meeting. I do want to thank all of you and all the staff and the community for nine years. Nine years ago, about this week, probably somewhere around where I came to the library and interviewed with some of you. And Bonner has become my home and my family's home. And picked my, one of my kids up today from the Aquatic Center at, right at 6 o'clock. So, no, this has been an honor to serve here and then with you all, and I appreciate the faith that you've put in me for these nine years, so. That is all I have.
Thank you. On to city council items. We'll go ahead and start right here next to me with Ms. Blanks.
Well, first, thank you to Sean. I only have the privilege to serve with you for six months, but you have been so welcoming, welcoming to me, getting involved in the community, and taking this big next step into council. So thank you for all your leadership and just, I mean, everything you've accomplished in the last nine years of what Bonner is today. I mean, you were a huge, huge helping hand in that. So thank you for, I mean, laying more than a foundation, but a strong foundation for more growth in the future. So thank you. Thank you to Megan for working on the murals. I'm a part of that committee. There are some really great ones that we met. I think someone from the Historic Society is there, Downtown Business is represented, and then the two business owners. So thank you for getting that together. It's going to be really exciting. And then last week, we had a Country Stampede recap meeting with Stampede, PD, FD, Azura, and Ag Hall. That all went really, really well. They're looking forward to coming back to Bonner next year, and we can expect some growth and some positive changes on their end. And then just as a friendly reminder, Thiblo Days is coming up. So if you have any questions on my side of things, let me know. But Chris has been doing a great job planning the mayor's banquet, so thank you to Chris on her end of that. That's all I have.
Ms. Ma?
I echo what Emily had to say, Sean, and also thank you for your never-ending patience with me and getting to know me and my personality and learning to work with me, and also helping mentor me through this process of understanding how cities work and how city government works. I appreciate you and your efforts, and I wish you the very, very best in your next role. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Yeah. Ditto's to all that, Sean. And we've really appreciated what you've done for the city and the friendship we've had besides that. Couple things I wanted to bring up, but no parking signs that are still there down on Cedar and Oak, or on Second Street between Cedar and Oak. If they're still there, can we remove those? The no parking signs? Because they're right there. That's where the market used to be, and it's not there anymore. And thanks for doing the, getting the patching done on Metropolitan Avenue. Couple people already mentioned that already, so that's great. Do you know what the status is on the city truck that the codes uses? I mean, I knew it was wrecked.
Yeah, it's getting repaired, so we do have it in the shop. I know it's got some work to be done on it. I don't know if they ever gave us an ETA when that was two weeks? Two weeks? Not three weeks. As long as it's not two months or three months.
If it means four, then okay.
Yeah, yeah. But we were able to work with the private insurance with the individual involved in the accident, so there has been a rental that was assigned to help us during, during this outage, if you will, so.
Also, storm drains on Lakewood. I noticed a couple of those are blocked. Need to be cleared out. And, let's see, what was the other one? Pond in the cemetery. There's some cattails growing up. I don't know if that's within the limits of what should go up there, but I know they spent a lot of time getting rid of all of them a year ago. But there's some back there that are on the west side, in the north corner there. And other than that, I'll talk about some other things some other time. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, Mayor. Sean, thanks for all the, wow, a lot of run. How many years?
Nine.
Nine years. That's like a, almost like setting a record, isn't it?
No, I think Mr. Healan's got me beat by a couple of years.
Yeah, does he? Well, you know, you really committed. You came in, I mean, you're young now, and you were a lot younger then. And you did a heck of a job, right? I can speak in behalf of my son, Blake, who's a police officer. He's going to, he's going to miss your partying, but I think Lawrence has really got something special. And you've earned that. Thank you for your commitment and hard work and all the hours that you put in. And I know that, working with Amber, she's ready to do that slip seating, if you will, so. We're blessed. We were blessed to have you. You'll be missed, but I think you've set things up as far as transitions go, so we should, we should just continue to move forward. Thanks for your vision that you had to, right? Appreciate that. Let's do the best.
Ms. Girly?
It comes up every once in a while, right now, that it's kind of a loud roar about our trash service. Do we, as a council, need to consider looking at other options and other service providers? I know that we have the ability to do that. That the rate indifference might make it prohibitive, but, and I know that the driver shortage is not unique to waste management by any stretch. I also know Edwardsville went to a different service, haven't had the issues. So is that something that we want to consider looking at in more detail?
Well, no, I was waiting to see if they, I had actually.
Aren't we putting out a survey?
I think that was.
Have we talked about putting out a survey to the public to ask if we want to switch? But we would be transparent that there would be a cost increase? So we'll have to figure out if they want higher costs or slower costs and not as better service, maybe?
So we're in the process of putting together a bid right now.
Okay.
To put it out for bid, and then once we get those answers back, we'll put a survey out to our residents.
Okay.
Yeah, I approached Chris about a month and a half, two months ago. As the service went completely downhill. And I talked to her, talked to Sean about the possibility of going out and at least, at the minimum, find out what type of services, changes we would have to endure, as well as what kind of costing differences. As some people say, if my trash isn't getting picked up now, I'm still not, I'm still farther ahead, even if I pay more, if I'm getting my trash, so.
At least my understanding, not living up to our contract by saying that we can put anything out at the curb, because they're down to one driver per car, they're not able to pick up anything at the curb.
We've got, I think, you said you were, had, were putting out some?
Okay.
A request out there to get some quotes back?
I have received a lot of reports and then forwarded them on to 311 and to Waste Management about trash not being picked up. I've only gotten one or two about specific items that should have been being, should have been picked up that weren't. One of those was a mattress that wasn't wrapped in plastic. So if somebody had something that was supposed to have been picked up and wasn't, then please have them let me know.
Okay, no comment. Thank you for that. And just chiming in, Sean, thank you. We kind of came up through this together. We've been on for about the same amount of time, and I think the city is much better for having you in this position over the last nine years, so. Burning is sweet sorrow, but I'm glad that you and your family are going to still be around town and active, and hopefully that remains for a while. Thank you for everything.
Ms. Kip?
I think I heard the term efficiency like 10 times now, but it's not meant as a derogatory term at all. I know that everybody works really hard to do that. It was just a question I'd love to be able to tell people. Hey, here's something we did. Here's something we did. So I didn't want that to be misconstrued as a criticism. Sean, thanks for giving me another reason not to like Lawrence. That helped out. I do.
Well, you get to pick on all of Douglas County.
Well, I'm just focused. The litmus test for me, Sean, is, is our city a better place than it is? Because of your leadership and the hard work of everybody in here, since I've been on here for nine years, same as the rest of us, our city is better. And there's no other way to benchmark, you know, your effect here and what you've done, except that's how I view it, and thank you. Been waiting for this meeting for a while, so I'm glad. Been waiting for this meeting for a while, so I'm glad it made it nine years. I thought it was gonna be sooner, so I'm glad we held you for a bit. Thanks to your family for being part of the community, and wish you the best of luck. Wish it was a little further west, but, good luck. Thanks.
And with that, you've seen my task report. There is, yes, that one last thing we need to do. With that, I am going to switch mics.
Sean, if you'd like to come up here. And I'd also like to invite Shannon and Otto and Oliver to come on up here as well. It is a family affair, whenever you hire somebody at this position. And before, he doesn't like to have things made, you know, a big deal about stuff, but I thought, you know, what's he gonna do, quit? Nine years ago, I, as we were going through the interview process, I mentioned to one of my council members that was on that selection committee, and I said, I don't know if, I'm real, I'm hesitant about this election. And it had nothing to do with his qualifications, but had everything to do with his qualifications. He was definitely qualified, but he was so qualified in his interview, he presented himself so well, I thought, how long are we actually going to have him? And that council member convinced me and said, listen, even if we only get him for three years, we're better off as a city than if we don't take him at all. So, we got nine years out of you, Sean, so you, we are a much better city because of your involvement here. So thank you very much. Any parting words?
No, just again, I appreciate everything that you all have done, and the council and staff, and as I mentioned, the community has been nothing but supportive, and it's been a great pleasure to live here and raise my two boys here. And, you know, we're still here. Just thank you, you know?
And thank you, everyone. With that, then, I would accept, unless there's something else, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Girly, a second by Ms. Blanks. Sorry, Ms. Blanks. And we'll just do a voice vote real quick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, not getting out of here? With that, we're adjourned.